All right, thank you everybody for coming this evening. We will call the Belvidere City Council Committee of the whole meeting for May 28, 24, 2024 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal's absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, thank you. And we have several registered under public comment here this evening. First, we have Lynette Camholtz. Ms. Camholtz? Would you come up here, please? Just state your, hi, state your name for the record.
Lynette Camholtz. I was just wanting to talk to about the garbage service that we have now. We called Rock River Disposal and we were told that we didn't have the option to opt out, that everybody in the city of Belvidere would be required to have this service and that you would be required to pay for it. I was under the impression when I watched the meeting that was last month, that the Rockford River Disposal representative said you had the option to opt out if you wanted to, you just could not have another garbage service come in to pick up your garbage. So, I read the contract that the city signed and there is nothing in the contract that says you have the option to opt out. When I called Rock River Disposal, they told me I have, to have the cans, I, they will not come and pick them up. I don't need your service, I don't want their service, I have a son that has a demolition and debris removal, and he takes my one little bag of garbage every other week with him when he goes to work because he's at the landfill two, three times a week. I want to know, does the city have a provision in the contract that says you can opt out? No? Did they not say at the last meeting that you had the option to opt out when that representative was here from Rock River Disposal? Did I not hear correct?
We have a meeting with them tomorrow. I have a meeting with them tomorrow, but they do not have an opt-out, is my understanding. So, I think that question was asked at the council meeting, and the reason that you don't have an opt-out is because, or the reason behind having a franchise with the garbage service was because we were a, people were calling, over the last four years, we had a hundred percent increase in cost to haul refuse. We also had four garbage collectors that were hauling garbage, and they were hauling them down the same streets one day after another. I, when I come into office, I was asked, is there any savings that could be had if you franchise the garbage, much like other communities in the area? Rochelle, Rockton, DeKalb, Sycamore, Loves Park, Machesney Park, Maringo, City of Rockford, this is nothing new. So, the price of, if I may finish, so the price and the complaints that we had received here at the city regarding the exorbitant increase in garbage service was what had driven this. We went out for requests for proposals to see if we could reduce the cost of garbage service in this community, and we could, much the ways other areas, other cities, other municipalities, much the way they do as well, they bid it for requests for proposals. Some of the other communities require that the garbage be paid with the water, and so that, you know, you're required to have garbage service in the city. There are some extenuating circumstances that I think we don't have answers to, those questions, but technically, the reason that individuals were going to see a relief from the prices of their garbage hauling was because we were able to franchise it as a, as a city, as many of the other communities have done in its entirety. So, that's the, that is what prompted this, was to see if some of the garbage, as a matter of fact, some of the haulers, since we've signed our contract for $25.35 for, per month for individuals with seniors, save, saving three additional dollars per month. Since then, some of the haulers have had a $17 increase on a bill that was anywhere from $48 a month to actually more than that. So, the, the idea behind it was to see if we could provide some relief, especially to senior citizens. Senior citizens had seen a tremendous increase, along with many other raises in food, fuel, many of the other things that we've seen increase. So, it was a, it was a chance to be able to see whether or not we could reduce these costs for them, and we have.
Okay, but you're forcing me to have something that I don't want. I haven't had garbage service for 17 years because my son owns a company that does that. So, you're forcing me to pay $23 a month on a service that I don't want and I didn't ask for. So, I think there should be something that I can opt out. I, I don't want service, I haven't had service, I'm, I, my son takes my little one bag of garbage every other week. So, I don't see where, you're saving the city money, but you're making me pay for something that I don't want.
We're not saving the city money, we're saving the city residents' money, all of the residents. In order for all of the residents to save any of the garbage that's hauled, any of the refuges that's hauled in the city of Belvidere, there will be no other hauler. Now, in answer to your question, you know, it's my understanding there is not an opt-out. However, I do know that we are going to have some more dialogue on that because there are individuals too that have, that are senior, and I have heard complaints that, or concerns that the recyclable and the garbage containers are too large for them to manipulate, and I can appreciate that, and so we do have some discussion about that, but.
So, it is not set in stone yet, there isn't going to be perhaps in the next couple days here, because it's supposed to take effect June 1st, that there's going to be a chance that I can opt out of this service that I don't want?
There's going to be discussion on that, but I would say probably you cannot, yes.
So, the person that came here last month and represented Rock River Disposal that said in this meeting that you had the option to opt out was misspoke?
No, I, I don't think so, but that's a question that I, we will, I will have a discussion, we will have a discussion with the company as well regarding that, whether or not they may. They may, there may be certain circumstances where people can opt out, but I can't say that for sure in answer to your question yet.
But can you go back and review the tape that he was here and said that? Because I know, I mean, did you, anybody else hear that? Okay, you heard that too. You heard that? You heard that? So, that, so he actually said you had the option to opt out. Well, my option is I want to opt out.
And I do believe that there'll be some discussions on that regarding, I want to make sure that we're clear with what his intent was regarding opt-out, so.
I just don't want to be forced to have a service that I don't want.
I understand.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Alderwoman Frank?
I think it was said that if you didn't want to, you could take your garbage to the landfill yourself. I don't think it was an opt-out. If I remember correctly, that's what I heard.
Yeah. Okay. Alderman Snow?
I remember it being an opt-out. People, if, the discussion was, if you didn't want to participate, you'd have to get rid of your own trash and take it to the landfill yourself, but there was an opt-out discussion. Now, whether it was in the contract, I didn't read that thing word for word, but I've been getting a lot of calls about that whole issue as well. And quite frankly, I believe part of the problem was, if you don't want to participate, don't pay the bill, and they stopped collecting.
No, there's a part in the contract that said they will take you to court, and they will sue you because the city has signed the contract. I don't remember exactly what paragraph it is, but if I had the contract, if I'm not going to tell you, because I read the contract.
I think, I think Ms. Ms. Camholtz, I think before we get out in the weeds here too far tonight, I think I do, I would like to have, we will have a discussion with them and define exactly what that, what that means. I understand that there were some concerns regarding franchising the garbage. The reason that it was franchised though, keep in mind, is that people have been, had a cost of living increase that's been really unprecedented in this country. I think anybody who buys anything understands that the price of everything has gone up. For everybody that, you know, I've heard with concerns about wanting to opt out, or I've heard them say about, you know, their choice of a garbage hauler, whatever, I've probably heard from, oh, five or 10 times as many people that have said, well, you know, I'd ask you if the city would do something about the price, the high price of, unprecedented price of garbage, and we did. Not only did we lower the price of individuals' garbage collection that they pay for, not only did we lower it, but as well, we took out a lot of the inflation that has caused them great concern over the last four years. Their price of garbage going up a hundred, a hundred percent in four years in this contract by, by franchising it and being able to franchise it, we've taken that out of, of that equation. This would be a five-year contract, there'll be a lot of people that are going to be happy, and they are happy, that they're going to see a huge savings, and not only immediate, but they're also going to see it in the future because you've taken out that inflationary rate that we've all had a very tough time dealing with, not only with garbage, but with, as I had said, many of the other things that we buy that are essentials. So, that was the idea behind it, but we will have, we will have further discussion with them, and we will see what that intent was, and I understand, I did, I did hear them say at a certain point in that meeting that there would be an opt-out, but I'm not sure that it was defined correctly, so we'll get an answer though. Thank you. Also, we have Kevin Camholtz. Kevin, did you want to come up here?
I'll take a few minutes, I have some trouble with this.
Is that on?
Yeah. First of all, I'll start with that, I do think that.
Wait, wait a minute, come up here and state your name, please, first, for the record.
My name is Kevin Camholtz. I'd like to start with it, I do think that bringing in the best contract for a garbage service is the best thing for the town, having less traffic on the streets, bringing down the price, I think that's a good thing. Somebody in my situation where I do own a company here in town, licensed, I'm at a landfill, transfer stations daily, I feel more comfortable taking my garbage there knowing how it's being treated and what's happening, especially with identity theft and things like that, it totally happens, you have no idea what's happening to your garbage, you want to just put it on that truck. I could go horror stories on the recycling, on the things that don't get recycled that we think that they are, and by putting them in a bulk can, I promise you, less than 50% of that stuff is being recycled. That's a whole nother topic. My concern is for my older parents, my father who's had five heart surgeries in the last year, taking his garbage cans down, dealing with that thing, type of thing, mowing it long, you know, so, these are a lot of things I'm trying to help with, and then now to, to be forced to do something like this, it's, it's almost like that swift kick, man, that you just, it's real hard to swallow. There should be an opt-out. Obviously, you can't, I don't think you should just be able to sign your name and opt-out and you, you're burning your garbage in the back, or you're burying a hole, or, there should be real reasons, but yes, our landfill, just 20 minutes down the road, is open to the public. You are more than welcome to go there on your own. This is not something that has to be commercially or, there should be a way to get out, like, this is America, I shouldn't be forced to pay for the service when I have viable options out of it. I am not hiring somebody else, so I'm not going against the contract. Again, they are not hiring anybody else, my parents, this is something that I do out of the goodness of my heart. Their need, there are, and now, this is just my family, I know that there are many, many other cases. If my mother-in-law was still alive today, like, there's no way that I would let her pay for her garbage, you know, it's, there just needs to be an option, and if tomorrow's the night to talk about it and get it done, but I, I mean, it needs to be, it needs to be said, I mean, there's, I don't know where else to go. I mean, this is, these are things that just need to be, how should we be forced to do That's, that's all I would say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman? You can, you can sit there, can't you, and address it?
No, I'll, I'll go over there. So, you all know, I'm Marsha Freeman, one of your 5th Ward alderpeople. I've been inundated with calls all week about this, and I can't believe that only 5th Ward people are upset. I spoke to a young lady who's trying to make it alone and takes her one bag a week to her parents' house. She's now going to have to budget an extra $25 a month on top of her rent and other bills she's paying. I talked to an elderly couple who take their one bag a week to their son's house. I talked to an elderly disabled veteran who cannot physically maneuver the large cans, and when he called Rock River Disposal, was told, too bad, you have to use ours. I talked to an elderly man who negotiated at a fee, an extra fee on top of his service to have his picked up in a location other than the front of his house due to a hardship of a lengthy driveway. Rock River Disposal will not accommodate him on this. I talked to a gentleman whose brother owns a business here in town, and being single, takes his one bag per week to his brother's business dumpster. I talked to neighbors who share the cost of their garbage collection with each other because they each only have one or two bags, so they all put it in one can at one house and split that cost. It was Alderman Stevens who asked about the opt-out option, and it was said that you could opt out. That's one of the problems. The other problem is all of these seniors who I've been getting calls from their children saying, Marsha, what can you do about my elderly 110-pound, 84-year-old dad who cannot take these big cans out? I said, when that was brought up at the meeting, the mayor said, well, they have wheels and they're easily rolled. When, saying that this is saving all residents' money. I believe Ms. Camholtz is a resident, it's not saving her money, it's not only not saving her money, it's costing her money. The young girl who takes her garbage to her parents' house is not saving money, it's costing her money. The elderly couple who takes their bag to their son's house is costing them money. I can go on and on. We didn't include city collection here at City Hall, police and fire stations, or public works. They, we all, they all have dumpsters and they're all with different carriers, so, in, which we pay hundreds of dollars a month for, I might add. And I don't, I never understood, from the get-go, I was against this from Jump Street because I knew this was opening a Pandora's box to even get these quotes, complaining about the cost of a weekly service that literally charges $10 per week, and the substantial savings that we speak of amounts to $8 a month or $2 a week, and instead causing hardship and possible injury to our senior citizens and adding expenses to people who otherwise didn't have to budget for them. The whole thing, I called Rock River Disposal today because we had a disagreement at my house, what day our garbage pickup is. The map they showed only, only draws out four streets. I'm like, where are, he said, our pickup's Tuesday. I said, no, I think it's Monday. When I called them, I was on hold for a half hour. You couldn't, I couldn't, I had to hang up because I don't have that kind of time. So, I have no idea when my garbage pickup is. I guess I'll put it out on Monday, if they don't pick it up, I'll put it out again on Tuesday. This week, now being, tomorrow's the first, and they're a day behind, I'm still not going to go, no, until next week. When I called my old company, no matter what the problem was, or I needed to talk to them, they actually picked up the phone and there was a person on the other end. I never waited on hold more than three minutes. This was not a no-brainer, as was recently described. Actually, when you have five aldermen against this, it's actually anything but a no-brainer. To me, the no-brainer was, we don't do this.
And I will say this, that probably individuals that are taking their garbage to someone else, I know that one of the individuals that spoke here this evening talked about how their son ended going to the garbage dump on a regular basis, that may be different, but individuals that are saving money, individuals that are actually not combining their garbage with someone else, if, a lot of times, you know, homeownership is, comes with that responsibilities. I think one of the reasons why you probably saw a higher increase in garbage perhaps was that individuals were do, perhaps were doing that. They were, I was taking my garbage over to an alderman's house, or I was taking my garbage. I will tell you this, I have a 95-year-old mother-in-law, and she pays for her garbage service, she's in her home, I don't go get her garbage and I don't combine it with anybody else either, and by the same token, I don't, I don't cause individuals, other individuals that follow, that are responsible and have garbage service, I don't add, put that added cost on, onto them. So, I would say that a lot of times, you know, if somebody's breaking, doing something that is combining garbage, that's one thing, but it also doesn't allow us, if that's the case with a franchise, it doesn't allow all the individuals that don't do that, which is by far the majority. And also, I might add that 70% plus of the individuals had Maringo Disposal, which is Rock River. So, their service really hasn't changed, they have larger containers, I am concerned about senior citizens being able to manipulate or negotiate their garbage containers, and we will address that. And as far as, as far as individuals, costing individuals more money, I think you have to put that into perspective, that you're talking, I fielded maybe 30 phone calls here, 30. I think we have probably 4,800, roughly 4,800 individuals that have garbage service, so I don't think 30, or 40, or 50, or 100 complaints are significant. I think also, you know, we did not, there was never going to be any perfection with rolling this out. I think when we realize that we're going to have a different service, a different provider, I think you have a few, you have some issues and you have to get them ironed out. It's no different in this than it is a lot of things. For instance, with our paramedic service, we had a change in that service, and we were able to negotiate through that, I believe we will get through this, and I believe the preponderance, the overwhelming majority of the individuals that pay for their garbage service are going to see savings with it, have no doubt. Alderman Snow?
So, a lot of my neighborhood never used the large cans, and I've gotten a lot of negative feedback on that, but I fielded a lot of calls, and none of them positive, for this garbage pickup, both in the large cans, I don't use the service, they were told they couldn't opt out, and there's going to be a lot of hardship in that regard, and I, I think it was a poor decision to do in the first place, but they definitely need to be able to opt out and have those cans picked up.
Can I, can I ask you this question? If they're not, if they're, if they don't have garbage pickup and they're a homeowner, or they have garbage, what are they doing with it? Does it, does it make you wonder?
Some of the people have, one person told me they had some, a cleaning service that comes over and cleans for them, and they just take the bag out with them. Other people own businesses, and so they take it to there, and again, I've had a couple where somebody said that their family member picks it up because they don't generate enough. And, and again, with the large cans, I think there's going to be a lot more pushback, to the point that you may wind up finding the cans sitting out at the curb because the people can't manipulate them, they're easier to walk out the bag of trash they have to the curb rather than haul that large can, just talking out loud.
Alderwoman Freeman?
So, when my mother lived in Deanna and Natalie's Ward, and before she had to have assisted living, she, she used to buy a $2.50 sticker for her one bag that she had every two weeks. So, her garbage would run her anywhere from $5 to $7.50 a month, she would just buy a roll of the stickers, and when her bag got full, she'd put the sticker on it and walk it out to the curb to be picked up. So, how would charging her $23 a month save her money when she was only paying between $5 and $7.50 a month? And, you know, that's, that's a lot of people here, we have a lot of senior citizens.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman Flurry?
Yes, you said you were talking tomorrow, just one thing that might be worth considering talking about with the, before the service is completely rolled out, but, is the, the big cans. I know, a majority of my neighbors are, right now are MDC, so you said it's supposed to be the same, but like, currently, they just put out kind of like their own garbage can, so it's in a garbage can, it's just not that big giant can, and some just put out a bag, and currently, they pick all that stuff up, so, I know the gentleman said that when Rock River Disposal came, that it had to be all big cans, that's part of the reason they could offer that savings, but again, if there's, I don't know what the numbers are in the city, but if a lot of people, again, just basing it off my one street, if I drive to work and see other refuge, is a lot of people use their own cans, and I can see how that could be a problem, so I don't know if that's something that could be discussed or talked about, or what, if there's some kind of, maybe some requirements that, not everyone can just get out of the can and get it, that companies that make business, and by having a little arm grabbing, throw it over is quicker than having to jump out of the truck, but if there's some kind of requirement, if you're 80 years or older, or something like that, that could maybe mitigate some of these problems you ran into.
And I will, I will say this, that I have had discussions with them because regarding being able to set out their garbage, or use a different container, something that may not be so large, and one of them was an 86-year-old gentleman. And one of them was an eighty-six-year-old gentleman, so I understand, I understand. But we will have some further discussions with them, and we'll see how they, how they go, hopefully. All right? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Under public forum, we have nothing on the agenda this evening. Flipping the page, reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item A, Fire Department. In your packet was a memo from Chief Shadle. And he talks about the emergency medical care and transport accomplishments in 2024. So, Chief Shadle.
Thank you, Mayor. May I utilize the podium?
Certainly.
Thank you. As you all know, FY24 is just, just past us. And with that, we've completed our first year resuming the ambulance service. So, you guys will recall, when we contracted with Metro Paramedic Services, they immediately put a notice out saying that they were hiring to fill their contract for the city. And that these individuals would be permanently assigned to our department, and they would look like us, they would operate under our rules and regs and chain of command. And so, in a short period of time, we had over seventy-two applications. It was a time where a large provider in the area got bought out, and we were the first mover for 911. And believe it or not, if you go to paramedic school, you wanna save lives, and how do you do that? You provide 911 service. The other option is, you know, maybe hospital transports, or bring people from the hospital nursing home and such as that. So, we had, as an early mover, great options. And we knew the vast majority, our department and our members, knew the vast majority of those who applied. And not only did we know them, we knew which ones were amazing at what they do, which ones give high, high level of care, which ones were just skilled providers. As you guys know, the SMOs are a few hundred pages and with clear instructions on every little thing. And you have to know all that, otherwise you could get in big trouble with the IDPH or worse. So, we, we chose these twelve. And these twelve individuals, as we expected, did an amazing job. I've gotten so many phone calls from residents and saying, you know, your ambulance crew came to my house, you helped my, you helped my father, and they, they did a really good job, and they were very caring. And at least once a week, I'd get a call like that. So, I wanted to recognize these individuals. Normally, for a firefighter, their first year is the end of their probation, and they get their helmet shield, and then they are off probation. So, since all twelve passed at the same time, I thought I would hand them a couple things all at once in front of you guys. So, if those providers that are here for you guys would line up, come on in. So, these twelve individuals were there on May one of twenty-three, and they're still here with us today. They not only do a great job, but they, they were chosen because they were good people, and they're easy to get along with, and they're kind, they're kind human beings. So, you put all those things together, and that equals excellent service. And that's what my desire for the community is. So, I'm not gonna go over, but these are stats of their first year. I'll just hit a couple high points. Last year, they did two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight patient assessments. Now, we do respond to all our firefighters, our paramedics, and it is customary to respond with more than two people to a medical call, especially if you're doing CPR or something like that. Having three or four paramedics all providing ALS skills at the same time leads to a really good outcome, or at least the best shot. So, twenty-six hundred patient assessments. They transported one thousand nine hundred and eighteen people to the hospitals last year. Ambulance one-twenty-one responded fourteen hundred and fifty-seven calls. And one-twenty-two, thirteen hundred and forty-eight, so pretty, pretty even. So, all the way down at the bottom, they got called for forty-two patients in cardiac arrest or deceased. So, this, obviously, this is a very tough job. But of those individuals, ten who were in cardiac arrest achieved ROSC, return a spontaneous circulation. So, they had pulses. So, when they got there, they weren't breathing, didn't have pulses. And by the time they're to the hospital, they had pulses. That happened ten times last year. So, with that, I'd like to hand each of them, what I have for them is a badge for their dress shirt, they just got dress shirts not too long ago, a name tag for that, and a challenge coin, and a certificate that says, "In recognition for one year of excellent service and dedication to emergency medical care, your commitment to providing outstanding service and unwavering dedication to the health and safety of our community are truly commendable. Thank you for your hard work, professionalism, and compassion." So, with that, I'll, I'll hand, hand them all out, and then we'll give them a round of applause after, after it's done, okay? Angel Cardona?
Thank you.
Hannah Couldn't Make It Today? John Dolez? Mike Morande? Emily Riley? Lauren Schultz? April Slack? Quinn Staley? Alex Stallens? Aubrey Swatter? And Johanna? Thank you, guys.
You know, Chief?
Yes, sir.
To all our professionals, you know, you serve the city and you serve us very, very well. We had a provider in the community for twenty years. And when the, when individuals needed help, they would call for transport and for care. And they could well rely on receiving it. And when we found out, the city, the chief, the council, when we found out that we were gonna lose that provider, we had, what, six months' notice, I think. And we found out that we were gonna have, after, we had a lot of angst, we had a lot of worry about how we were gonna provide the same care. Anybody who picks up the phone and their loved one or themselves need help, we wanna make sure we do the best that we can. And I think that the chief actually had put together a great team. And I wanna commend you on your service to the city of Belvidere. Without it, we would be in trouble. So, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. Moving on, under public safety unfinished business, we have none. Public safety, new business, item A, Police Department update, Chief Woody. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Since last month, I received notice from Deputy Chief Wallace of his intent to retire after twenty-seven years with the Belvidere Police Department and thirty-two years in law enforcement in general. His last day will be June twenty-first, 2024, and we'll be having a retirement ceremony for him at the PSP. I appointed Sergeant Byrd to replace Deputy Chief Wallace. And this Thursday, we have a Fire and Police Commission meeting where we'll be interviewing potential new sergeants, and Fire and Police Commission will be selecting the sergeant to take Sergeant Byrd's position. The promotions for the new deputy chief, as well as the new sergeant, will be at City Hall on June twentieth at ten AM. And love to see as many of the aldermen that are available that can make it, it'd be much appreciated. Currently, we have one officer on long-term medical, two in the FTO program. And with the retirement of Deputy Chief Wallace, that'll put us with two positions that we need to fill going forward. On a, a positive note, seven of your police officers were recognized by the state of Illinois with the Law Enforcement Medal of Honor on May twentieth in Springfield for their response to the F1 tornado on March thirty-first, 2023, at the Apollo Theater. I just recently got a notification from the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police that they will be also recognizing those officers with the Medal of Valor as well. The date and time of that recognition's to be determined. And that would conclude my update for this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Chief Woody? Okay, thank you, Chief. Item B, Fire Department update, Chief Shadle?
Thank you, sir. In the last thirty days, the Fire Department responded to two hundred and fifty-three calls for service, about eight-point-four per shift. One of the calls, not Saturday, but the Saturday prior, was apartment fire. Unfortunately, two apartments were damaged by a fire and suppression efforts, and so they're uninhabitable. It was Saturday, it was a hot day, eighty-six degrees. And so, we needed to make sure we had enough help to cycle the firefighters through. We, we called a MABUS box to the second level for that. And so, luckily, the fire was extinguished rapidly, as quick as possible, and nobody was injured, and the firefighters were hurt. So, the outcome was as, as good as it could be. Gina also helped connect the residents with some community resources to, to help them out. And it sounds like they were able to, or very soon, able to move into a different apartment in the same area in Green Farm Town Home. So, just wanted to update you on that. Other than that, one hundred and seventy-six medical calls and a number of public assists. There was four-car accidents with injuries. And not too many calls related to that storm. So, we were lucky that that storm never materialized. We did hire back two individuals so we could have staff that third vehicle, our Rescue 142, our pickup truck that provides ALS service. So, emergency transports, we had a hundred and forty-seven. Twelve percent went to Javon Bay, forty-five percent went to OSF, eighteen percent went to UW Rockford, and twenty-five percent went here in town. So, I wanted to update you guys on our fire code situation. So, the fire codes are chosen by you guys, by ordinance, with our help, of course. And so, we basically adopt a code set. And last time they were done, we have the 2015, IFC 2015. So, as you can imagine, a lot has happened. I don't even know if lithium-ion battery factories were a thing in 2015. There's definitely nothing in the code about them. So, the biggest driver for us, and it was also time, but is to make sure that we have the latest code sets, especially in those areas that are technology-driven and changing rapidly. So, the building department is doing the same thing. That regional cooperative never came to fruition for this round. So, everybody is doing a slightly different thing. We compiled our resources, the inspection department did, and we'll be presenting that on the twenty-fourth to you guys. Basically, it's IFC 2021 with adopting IFC 2024, any part where it deals with lithium-ion storage, or manufacturing, or anything like that. And then, so we're gonna bring this to you in ordinance form, with a packet with attorney drillers' help, of course, and it'll, it'll lay that out. The amendments, there's probably fifteen pages or so reduced down quite a bit. But basically, the amendments, the reason we do that is anytime that there's a specific risk or hazard to our community, sometimes we opt out of something that would be unreasonable or unfeasible. Like, for example, the building code isn't gonna have residential home sprinklers because, obviously, that is a, is a strong issue. That might cause a hardship to builders or, or change that. So, that's just one example of something that you would exempt out. Sometimes two sprinklers are grandfathered. So, for example, Perry Elementary not sprinklered because when it was built, they weren't invented. No, just kidding. Because when it was built, it wasn't part of the code. And now that it is, but a lot of those building occupancy classifications are grandfathered, but it's, it does happen where all of a sudden, now it's not grandfathered because of the code. And then, you're looking at, maybe you're gonna put all these gathering places out of business because now they'd have to put a very expensive sprinkler system into an existing building. So, that's just an example of that. Anytime that we can increase safety or response efficiency, when the cost is negligible, we'll do that. Some of the codes give discretion to the fire code official. And so, we would clarify that, that would be put in that packet, any clarifications. And then, sometimes, we already have an ordinance. An example of that is the burning ordinance. So, for outdoor burning, it's going to say, see our ordinance. So, you guys can expect that. I wanted to give you a heads up because it is gonna be a lot to digest, and there is important stuff in there. But any of the amendments, we're gonna fall into one of those five categories. So, we had a firefighter, probationary firefighter Herrera. I can't remember if I told you guys that or not, but he resigned. I might have? Nope, it doesn't look like it. So, firefighter Herrera resigned. He gave us about ten days' notice, and it was unexpected. We did have two left on our list, on our hiring list, from two years ago. Unfortunately, neither of them are able to move forward in the process. And so, now we're just waiting for the new list. So, we have an opening, and we're filling it, his opening on overtime. His last day was May tenth. And so, it will be a few months. So, the process, as you guys know, we're accepting applications for sixty days. We're about thirty days in. And then, after that, we're gonna move as fast as possible to get someone through the Police and Fire Commission. It's a number of steps, as, as you guys know, to do that. We're gonna do that halfway through. We have thirty-five applications submitted, seventeen tests taken, and seven interviews completed. So, it, it's a good response, and I expect, if I were taking the test, I would have studied at least the first thirty days. So, I expect the numbers to increase this next thirty days. So, I wanna move on to ambulance billing this month. I'm gonna give you an approximate figure because I didn't think of it until it was late, and I called Shannon, and I think she was already gone. So, approximately forty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars collected this month. And, sorry, Shannon. Of that, it's, it's still really low. So, we're not getting anything from Medicaid, we're not getting anything from Blue Cross, Blue Shield. So, we are working really, really hard to see what the heck is going on with that. Letters, we've, meeting, I, I email my rep every three days, and we're, we're working as hard as we can. But the two hundred and eighty Medicaid runs were resubmitted now that everything is squared away, and we should expect them to be processed in four to six weeks. So, we heard back from Medicare the second time, just today, actually, that they are not going to budge on our date. So, our official start for them is June tenth. So, we're not gonna be able to get any- So we're not going to be able to get any Medicare and also therefore any Medicaid revenue for the runs we provided May 1st to June 10th. Forty-two Medicare trips, 38 Medicaid trips, total estimated revenue loss of $29,334. So we've, again, in that area, we've written numerous letters. We got Medicaid to move their date from October 16th back to June 10th. So that was a huge win for us. The mayor, Shannon, Mike, Sarah, we've all been working to do that. We appealed twice to Medicare, and they said, said, "Nope." So, and I will end on a good note. Our E350, the auction ended for that. It's that water rescue vehicle, and we expected between 5 and, or we're hoping for, between 5 and 7,000. We sold it for $6,175, and that auction through Wisconsin surplus, the buyer pays all the fees, so we'll actually receive that amount. So that concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Shadle? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief, I just had a couple for you. Touch on the Medicare and Medicaid. So Medicaid is, comes from the state, and Medicare comes from the federal government, correct? So you're dealing with two different entities there trying to get reimbursement? That's the discrepancy.
Yes, and Medicaid will only do what Medicare does. So if Medicare would have moved their date to the beginning, Medicaid would have followed. But you're correct, just Medicaid is, if anyone didn't see my head shaking or the, for the tape, Medicaid is state and Medicare is federal.
Okay, and then I had a question about the 42 patients in cardiac arrest or deceased, with 10 having return of spontaneous circulation from CPR. So I have a degree in medical records, electronic records, so I'm wondering how up-to-date are, is our system? If you have a DNR or do not resuscitate, do you see that? And do you then not perform CPR on that patient? Or does that just take over once you get to the hospital?
No. A DNR, the way it works with our protocols is they have, we have to see it. We have to see it. We can't, someone can't. So message to anybody that has a DNR, have it somewhere that's accessible. If 911 comes and it cannot be produced, by law, the paramedics have to start CPR and then call medical control and get authorization to stop CPR. So if you have one, but they changed the name of it, it's called upholstered. I forget what it stands for now. But yeah, if someone produces that, then we would follow whatever directives on that. It's usually no advanced therapies or no CPR sometimes specifically.
So you don't have access to the electronic, you don't, you don't see the patient's medical records that, you know, they're electronically on a, on a screen or a laptop that you have in your vehicle?
We only have access to our records. HIPAA law is extremely strict. So HIPAA law is so strict that when I follow up on patients that have gone to the hospital for either training purposes, or maybe it was a really serious call, and they really want to know, just, "Hey, I don't want medical information, I just want to know if the patient's alive," you know, oftentimes they, I can't even get that information. So unfortunately, our record system, although up-to-date, we just updated a few years back, or actually, on May 1, since we provide the ambulance, it only includes our records. And any sharing that we do, it has to be for either billing purposes, training purposes, and things like that.
So reminder for any, any patients that have allergies or anything like that, make sure you have your wristband or your necklace on?
Yep, and then it wasn't too long ago that we got a grant for, from Metro for those medical ID cards, the names slipping my memory off the top of my head, but it is a magnet, and it was distributed by the Council on Aging, and it includes something that you slide in there that has your medication list or medical, pertinent medical information. So I would recommend that to any, anyone that has medical conditions and that might need emergency services to have some of that information accessible. If it's on the fridge, that's a place that we look for it. So if someone's unresponsive and they can't talk to us, we will look on the fridge for that. Vile Life is what it's called. So we just purchased, I believe, 1,500 of those, and they're distributed through the Council on Aging. So if anybody wants one or anyone calls you and asks, "How do I get one?", they can contact them, and they'd get it for free.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Shadle? Thank you, Chief. Moving on, item three, finance and personnel on the finish business, we have none. Item four, finance and personnel, new business, finance, item A, Finance Department update, Director Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two brief updates to share with council. One is our fiscal year '24 end. A great deal of city staff time during May and June has and will continue to be dedicated to providing documentation to Sikkich as part of their preliminary fieldwork for the FY '24 year-end audit. Sikkich will be onsite for two weeks in June to complete their final fieldwork, and the goal is to have them present, to present their findings to council at a September committee of the whole meeting. And then the other is on grants. Departments continue to seek out and apply for grants for a variety of citywide projects and successfully submitted, and we've successfully submitted multiple applications last week and have already submitted two this week. We currently have 32 grants in various stages, ranging from application to near completion.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hanson? Okay. Thank you. Item five, other, item A, project, Public Works ordinance vacating portions of Morium Drive, Morium Drive and Crosslink Parkway. In your packet was a proposed ordinance vacating the portions of Morium Drive and Crosslink Parkway. I guess I would ask Mr. Anderson to make a comment, if he would, please.
This is in relationship to the Yukon Project. The rerouting of the, of those, those roadways has been completed. All that work's done, and those new roadways are now being utilized. Therefore, the ordinance vacating the old right-of-way alignments is needed at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll point out that the version of the ordinance that was included in your packets, I didn't realize was going in quite that quickly. I apologize for the typos. Those have been fixed and will be in for first reading. It also did not have two of the exhibits that should have been attached to it, which were simply plaques showing where the roads are and the easements are that are being vacated. But they will be in your packets for first reading.
Okay, thank you. And I think in your packet, what you have in front of you anyhow, it points out that the incorporated herein rendering them of no public benefit. So the property that we're asking to vacate has no public, it has no benefit. So anyhow, if I could get a motion to that effect for any discussion. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And a second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have item B, Public Works Water Department Equipment Replacement of a 2007 Ford pickup truck. In your packet was a memo dated May 22nd from Director Anderson. That was an itemized bid. That has changed, and I'll let Mr. Anderson comment on that.
Okay, in your packet was a, was a memo we put together. The current budget includes $60,000 for the replacement of our 2007 Ford pickup truck. However, we're going to keep the 2007 Ford pickup truck in our fleet. We're actually going to put up for auction the 1993 Suburban that we acquired many years ago from the, from the Fire Department. So that's the one that's actually going to be leaving. So we received both new and used proposals, and then we received another new proposal from Kunis Belvedere this morning, actually, and a copy of that is on your desk, and it is a, basically virtually the same as the Kunis 2024 GMC Sierra 2500. In fact, serial numbers are real close to each other. So it's got all the same benefits. The only difference is it's got a mileage of 92 miles versus the one from Elkhorn, and I think it's got like five or 10, so it's got just a little bit more miles. But the final cost from Kunis Belvedere is $60,996.3. I would recommend the purchase of the 2024 GMC Sierra 2500 HD pickup truck from Kunis Auto Group at a cost of $60,996.3. This work will be paid for from, or this work, this vehicle will be paid for from the Water Depreciation Fund 0409.
Okay, thank you. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, thank you. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So do we ever do like trade-ins? Do they, do they give us allowance for trade-ins?
We do. Fortunately, with, with our Vehicles and Public Works Department, there's not much value when we go to trade them in, such as the Suburban. So they'll maybe basically give us scrap value, so we'll just do that directly. So in this case, yeah, we'll put it out to bid and put a reserve on there for scrap value. So at a minimum, we'll get that, maybe we'll get a little extra, too.
And then will we be having somebody like paint, you know, Belvedere City Water Department or Public Works or, and put the little yellow lights on top and that type of stuff? Is that what this truck's going to be used for?
We'll see if it needs the yellow lights or not. Yeah, it'll be identified, there'll be the markets put on there for Water Department.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And then we have item C, Public Works Landfill 1 Groundwater Monitoring Bid Tabulation. Again, in your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated May 22nd, 2024, with the bid, and Mr. Anderson?
In your packets, a memo, we received one bid back this year for our groundwater monitoring, Pace Analytical Services, who's been doing this work for us for a number of years now. And this new bid is identical to the previous contract price, so there's been no increase. I would recommend approval of the bid from Pace Analytical Services for the groundwater monitoring of Belvedere Municipal Landfill Number 1 from July 2024 until August 2025 in the amount of $12,920. We did put in the bid specifications this year, the possible of a one-year extension at that for the contract, and we will, we'll address that in two years when the first two years are up.
Thank you. If I could get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And a second, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor, Alderman Snow?
Frank, could you tell us, because it pertains to the next one, which landfills, number one and number two, where they're located?
So landfill number one is the old, is located in Spencer Park off Appleton Road. Landfill number two is on the county farm property, the county-owned property on Illinois 76 north of the fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions before we vote? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And going on, moving on to item D, that memo in your packet as well regarding landfill number two, groundwater monitoring, bid tabulations, a memo from Director Anderson in your packet, and Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the memo states, yeah, the bid, again, from Pace Analytical came in the same cost as what we've been currently paid for the last two years. I would recommend approval of the bid from Pace Analytical in the amount of $76,445.80 for the groundwater monitoring of Belvedere Municipal Landfill Number 2 for two years, beginning with the October 2024 sampling period. And again, we put in a possible one-year extension as well to make it three years, but we will deal with that when the first two years are up.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Alderman Snow, thank you. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions, any comments, Alderman Snow?
So will this cost be split with the county, then? So as we see, it'll be half of the 76 ultimately?
Correct. This is included in our 50 or 60, whatever we budget for, for landfill for in the fiscal year, this is included in that.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So the 76, 44580 for two years, is that for the two years or is that per year? The next two years?
That's a grand total for the two years.
Thank you.
And we're hoping to get that reduced over time so that eventually we'll be paying the same as number two that we are in number one.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And moving on to item E, Public Works Street Department Building Repairs Regarding the Fire Damage That We Had At Our Street Department Building. In your packet, in your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated 5/22/24 covering those proposals. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, we received two proposals to do the building repairs caused by the fire that we had at the Street Department. Midwest Agro Systems, $141,699. Scandrolly Construction, $450,855. We talked to, I believe, six different contractors, most of them local in the area, and we had a real difficult time getting more than one proposal back, just because of the amount of work that's out there and the time. If we could have waited a year for repairs, they all would have provided bids to us, but we couldn't do that. The property damage value, value based on our insurance carrier's appraiser is $137,772.32. We do have replacement cost coverage on the building, and the final value will be reviewed by the appraiser once all the work complete, is completed. They have approved the, the repair cost for the doors, the overhead doors, they have approved the heating, they have approved the COMED, or not COMED, the electric utility work done. So the building, the, the building is the last one here for approval. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Midwest Agro Systems in the amount of $141,690 for the repairing of the fire-damaged building at the Street Department. This work will be paid for from item 0153106010 and reimbursed by insurance.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Second, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. So why is the discrepancy between Scandrolly and Midwest? There's a pretty substantial difference.
Because I think Scandrolly, I think that reflects just how busy they are and what they would have to do in order to accommodate a schedule for us that would work for us as far as getting them, being able to occupy that building once again.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item F, Resolution For Maintenance Under The Illinois Highway Code. In your packet, there is a resolution for maintenance regarding the appropriated sum of $800,000 for motor fuel tax funds from the Illinois Department of Transportation. If we could have a motion, Director Anderson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
This covers our general maintenance program. So based on, on what we have lined up for work to do, the $800,000, this is the initial. As we go through the process of the summer, if we have to do additional, we need additional funding, then we'll come back with a supplemental resolution, but this, hopefully, we'll take care of it.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And we have And we have last, item G, Public Works Wastewater Treatment Plant Thickening Centrifuge Repair. In your packet was a memo from Director Anderson dated 22nd of May, 2024. And Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet, the second of our two Centresys thickening centrifuges at the wastewater treatment plant needs to be rehabilitated. We did the first one several months ago, and now the second one needs to go through that same process. The cost estimate from Centresys to make the necessary repairs to the THK 200 rotating assembly is forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety cents. I would recommend approval of proposal from Centresys for factory repairs to the thickening centrifuge at a cost not to exceed forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety cents. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation account, 611790. And at the council meeting, we will need a motion to waive the bidding process as the cost for repairs exceeds twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion then to approve the forty-five, forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, ninety cents? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. That's all we have on the agenda for this evening. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Hold on, just hold that. Chief Shadell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we adjourn, just for clarification, I called Shannon after her office hours. I was late. I just wanted to clarify that. I didn't want Ms. Hanson to appear. She was here, so.
But it was during your office hours from, what, nine to three?
Nine to two. That is just a joke, too, for the record.
That that is, I can I can verify that. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Frank, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And anybody want to stay? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned for the record. We adjourned at 7:11 PM. Thank you, everybody.